Ladies and gentlemen, we call to meet in order if you would rise for Mr. Wilder to lead us in prayer. Mr. Jackson to lead us in the place.
Y'all would bow with us. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for such a beautiful day today and all the many blessings you bestow upon us, this community, this great country of ours. As you look over us tonight, guide us, help us to reach good decisions for our community. And to look after all those that look after us, our firemen, policemen, our ambulance service. And we thank you for all these folks that have taken time out of their busy week to come join us and participate in this process this evening. Give them all a safe ride home from this meeting. All these things in Jesus' name we ask, amen.
I'd like to read this statement before we get the meeting started. I'd like to take a moment to clarify the planning commission is a recommended body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning various requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for the final action on April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. If you wish to address the Board of Commissions at their meeting, please see Ms. Stoller to obtain a request to speak for them. Okay. Like a motion for approval of the minutes of previous meeting.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by your right hand. Approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Who moved?
Second.
All in favor with your right hand? First item on the agenda is a massage operator's license for Stephanie Hall doing business, sports, and injured body works. Butler.
An insurance request for massage operators license for sport injured body work LLC, promote massage services only, allow them in all the requirements that the ordinance staff recommends approval.
Any questions? Have a motion to approve or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for sport and injury bodywork LLC to provide mobile massage services.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Next item on the agenda is Savannah River Outdoors, Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a request for provisional home occupation for Savannah River Outdoors. This business is located at fifty-seven fifty Colley Road, which is just south of Harlem Grove Town Road, west of Grove Town. The property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, as are all of the surrounding properties. Shows the area of the site and shows the existing house on the property. And the proposed business is a kayak rental business. There are currently five kayaks already on the property, along with two trailers and two vehicles to tow those trailers. All of these are already on the property and used by the family. They are additionally ordering three more kayaks, so they will have eight kayaks available for rent. The kayaks and the other equipment are stored in the existing carport and metal shed on the property. These two structures total approximately eleven hundred square feet, and the house measures just over twenty-five hundred square feet. So the two ancillary structures do measure less than fifty percent of the area of the house and meet the requirements for provisional home occupation. The applicants are hoping to expand the business in the future with the goal of having a physical commercial storefront. The current provisional home occupation would obviously not cover the commercial storefront. It is approval only for the kayak rental business at the scale with the eight kayaks for rent on the property. Any changes to that at this address would require review and approval from Planning Commission. If they do eventually move to a commercial site, that will be handled through the business license process. They'll just update their license address. Overall, the use is relatively low impact as it relies on the trucks and trailers already on the property, and the majority of the kayaks are already present as well. So there's very little change in the character of the site. And the applicants are, will be delivering the kayaks to their customers at their drop-in locations. So there's not expected to be a significant increase in traffic either. Given this staff is recommending approval of this provisional home occupation.
Any questions concerning it? Now I'd like a motion to accept or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional home occupation for Savannah River Outdoors at fifty-seven fifty Colley Road.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hands, please. Next one is Kathy Construction and Services, Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a provisional home occupation for Kathy Construction at eight sixteen Matt's Lane. This property is in the Kelly Acres subdivision off of Clary Cut Road and is also zoned RA residential agricultural, as are all of the surrounding properties. This shows the area of the site and you can see the existing house and existing shop building. And the proposed business is a construction services business, offering services such as installation of sidewalks, driveways, lean-tos, decks, culvert pipes, and similar services. There are no additional employees besides the applicant, so there should be minimal traffic to and from the site. The existing shop building will be used for storage of hand tools and a generator with an area behind the shop dedicated for parking of the trailers and equipment related to this business. That includes a work truck, trailer, skid steer, and mini excavator. There is tree cover on both sides of this property, as well as the shop building screening, the parking area from the road. And this type of equipment is not unusual in an agricultural area. There should be minimal impact to the character of the property or the adjacent neighbors, and staff is recommending approval.
Any questions? Like a motion to accept or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional home occupation for Kathy Construction at eight sixteen Matt's Lane.
Second. Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay. This next item is information only. Butler.
This is a temporary use authorization for temporary gravel parking at forty-eighty-seven Hammond's Ferry, Gentry subdivision. Shows the location of the property. And the zoning of the property and currently zoned planned unit development. Plan itself, what they're planning to do is put down some gravel in this area here for temporary parking. They already have some asphalt here and here. It wasn't really designed for vehicles. It was designed more for golf carts and maybe a couple of vehicles. So this is a very temporary measure while they open up the driving range, especially over the next week. They will likely be coming back in for a minor revision to modify this parking lot and perhaps add some additional structures on the left-hand side of this picture. This shows the site photo looking from the other direction. Also, again, one private bus in the situation. And the staff approved this on March twenty-fourth.
That was for information only, and the next item is conceptual plan for Bird Farm Estates, Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a revision to the previously approved conceptual plan for Bird Farm Estates located off Lewisville Road. This property is on the west side of Lewisville Road and was rezoned to R-one single-family residential earlier this year. One of the approved conditions did limit this development to no more than fifteen buildable lots, and that is a large part of the impetus for the revision to the conceptual plan. This shows the existing conditions of the site. There's tree cover at the back of the property, but the majority of the site is already cleared, and it does slope down towards the creek at the rear of the property. Here you can see the existing site. Again, most of the front of the property is already cleared. And the soil survey was done and reviewed with the previous conceptual plan review. The soils are suitable for septic systems in this location. This was the approved concept. It did have twenty-one lots on it, the single road running to the back of the property. The revised concept does reduce the number of lots to fifteen in compliance with the approved zoning conditions and does relocate the road to the south on the property. It is noted as a private road rather than a public road. It also leaves space at the front for buffering on Lewisville Road that allows compliance with one of the other approved zoning conditions that required additional consideration for buffering on that road frontage. And staff is recommending approval of the revised concept.
Any questions concerning this issue? It came before, it's before, and it has been changed. If not, like a motion to accept or deny?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the revised conceptual plan for Bird Farms Estates off Lewisville Road.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, we'll get into the public hearing portion of this tonight. First item is Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a request for variances to several sections at three thirty East Milledgeville Road. This property is located just outside the city limits of Harlem on the kind of southeast side of East Milledgeville Road, just before it becomes Gordon Highway. It is currently zoned C-two. That zoning was approved in nineteen eighty-four in conjunction with a lot size variance, which county code actually no longer allows. So that is a unique situation for this property to have that variance in place. And this shows the area of the site. There is an existing building on the property. Due to the small lot size and the location of this existing building, it does not meet many of the standards that the county now requires for commercial development. This property's been vacant for over twelve months. There has been a business license request made for the VFW to relocate to the site. In order to do that, to put the building back into operation, they have to bring the property into compliance. And given the small size of the property and the existing conditions, in this case, that does mean quite a few variance requests. So this is the existing building on the site. And the historic imagery, part of the argument with the building setback request we'll hear, we'll see in a minute, is that the road was widened. That seems to have happened in the late eighties after the property was rezoned. You can see that the later imagery is pretty consistent as far as the road design. So the first variance is for the front building setback. On an arterial road like this, the typical setback is a hundred and twenty-five feet from the center line of the road. You can see that that setback line is actually behind this property, so it is impossible to meet the building setback on this lot. The applicants are intending to reuse the existing building, which is essentially on the front property line, so it's a zero-foot front setback or fifty feet from the center line of the road. As per GIS, the building was constructed approximately nineteen fifty-one, so that was before the county had zoning requirements. So it's been in place for over seventy years, and as far as we know, has not caused any issues. With that combination of factors, there's no particular concerns with approving the setback variance. There is a condition recommended to apply the variance only to this existing structure. Given the situation on the site, that does mean that if the structure is demolished and they need to rebuild, they would have to reapply for this variance for the new building. This shows the location of the building. It is quite close to the road. The second variance is for the buffer requirements. Now, the property over here is also zoned commercial, and this is a church. It is located in Harlem, so it is not under the county zoning, but we would not typically require a buffer for the commercial property against the church. So they are only required to buffer against the rear where they are backing up to residential properties. The buffer requirement would be a thirty-foot structural buffer, which would be a fence or wall and then thirty feet of landscaping. You can see the thirty feet passes through the building, so it's not feasible to landscape that space. The space that is there is the drive access around the building for deliveries and also houses the septic system for the building. So you can't really landscape that area effectively. There was some discussion about still requiring the fence, but this is a very narrow space, and there is some concerns with making it even narrower effectively with adding the fence there. So this shows the existing condition with that gravel drive around the back of the building. And the third variance is to landscaping. Now, we don't typically see landscape variances. Ordinarily, we can handle this at staff level with an alternate landscape plan. However, there's still little space on this site that even with an alternate landscape plan, it's quite likely they wouldn't meet the full intent of the landscaping code. So ordinarily, they would be required a ten-foot landscape strip along the road frontage. In this case, that passes through the building and both driveways. Obviously, they need the driveways for access and can't landscape those areas, and the building impedes kind of the remainder of the site. There is a condition to require them to submit an alternate plan for these grass areas on the side of the building to add some landscaping to the site. That is proposed as a condition of the approval. The final concern, as far as non-conforming issues on the site, was parking. They do have some spaces on the site they're using for about three cars on one side of the building. My car sitting in one of them is demonstration. They also have a shared parking agreement with the C-two parcel to the southeast of them, as well as a verbal agreement to share parking with the adjacent church. So with those shared parking agreements in place, they do meet the minimum parking requirements for the county, and so they do not have a parking variance included with this. So staff is recommending approval of the variances to the building setbacks, the buffers, and the landscaping code with several conditions. One being the alternate landscape plan to be submitted within three months, and installation of the approved landscaping within twelve months. The condition that the variance apply only to the existing structure with any replacement or future structures requiring new variance application. And that the ten-foot easement currently labeled as Bobcat Lane shall be maintained and kept clear. That is the access to the residential properties behind this parcel, so it does obviously need to remain open for them to access their properties. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Anyone here that would like to come forward and address this issue? You would state your name and address, please.
Eric April in twelve sixty County Line Road, representing three thirty East Milledgeville Road. I'm the commander of the Columbia County Memorial Post, six four four five of the Veterans of the Foreign Wars. And I'm representing three hundred and ten of our members of the post and eighty-six members of the auxiliary. I've reviewed the variance request and the recommendation, including the interdepartmental review, and I don't see any issues with the conditions laid out that are pending.
Questions? Thank you for presenting.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anyone here wants to speak far against it?
Hi.
Have your name and address, please.
It's Lisa Koenig at sixty-five thirty Bobcat Lane, Harlem.
Okay.
Um, we live behind this building, and we have some concerns because we have three young kids, and there's also some other children who are on bicycles who ride around this area constantly. So I'm here mainly for them to make sure that they are kept safe with the traffic that this is going to bring into this area. Because they are constantly on their bikes going back and forth on this gravel area through here.
Yes, there's questions?
They ride out to the highway?
Yes, well, because if you see the trailer over here to the left, where the house in the middle, it's not showing.
You can draw on it.
Oh, we're back.
There you go.
That way. But they travel from this house over to here, and there's another trailer here. These kids come over here and go that way to our house and back and forth.
Yeah, go to that, yeah, go to that aerial one.
Yeah. We're right here. They go this way over to that trailer there. Hard to see where everybody is, but yes, because our kids congregate with those kids over there, and so they're constantly going back and forth.
Is the church property had any issues with the traffic for your kids riding the bike?
No, and usually they're just Sunday morning and Wednesday evening.
And Wednesday services, okay.
If way up they can ride?
I'm sorry?
Anywhere else they can ride?
Not really because of the fencing that goes through the properties. They kind of have to take that.
I understand your problem. I think everybody else does. However, it's not, I mean, when that building is being used and approved. It, we couldn't in good conscience turn it down by the fact that that is the place where the children were when it was empty. I mean, if anybody's got any more questions, I thought about you need to speak up.
Well, I'm curious what kind of hours, if we could get the, kind of, how many, kind of traffic flow are you looking at, and how many days a week, what times a day? Come here, come on back up.
To the mic so we can get it on the recording.
Eric April again. So when we were in our old location, our hours were four PM to eight PM, Monday through Friday, and then twelve to eight on Saturday. And barring any special events, I would say our clientele was usually about six veterans that would sit in that location. We had a beer license in that location, which we're not gonna, we're not, we're not gonna have it in this location. So I kind of see attendance during the week probably, probably not even that.
Average age of your veterans?
Um.
About?
Right behind me. Seventy, seventy to eighty. I'm one of the younger, and I'm forty-eight, so.
Got you.
Got you.
So it's in the evening time primarily, except on the weekend on Saturday?
Yes, sir.
Thank you both. Any other questions? Issue? Like to entertain a motion to accept or deny?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA twenty-three dash zero three dash zero eight variances to reduce the front setback. Reduce the buffer and reduce the landscaping requirements at three thirty East Milledgeville Road. Second.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify, raise your right hands, please. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Mr. Dylan Douglas.
Yes, sir. This is an application for a variance at four five six seven Oxford Drive to the side building setback for the lot. This shows the location of four five six seven Oxford Drive northeast of the intersection of Hereford Farm Road and Gibbs and Cox Road in the Waterford subdivision.
Give me a second. Y'all can hold it down, please, while we're having this meeting.
This shows the zoning of the property. It's R-two zoning, again, in the Waterford subdivision, which is all R-two zoning. This is an aerial of the site. With this image, we'd like to point out that we'll mostly be addressing the area where the shed is, along the northwestern property line right there. Yes, and additionally, we'd like to point out with this image that the adjacent property is vacant and owned by the Waterford subdivision HOA. And it is allocated strictly to maintenance for the pond in the center of the neighborhood. This shows the plat, and again, it labels the pond, the Waterford Property Owners Association Pond at the rear of the property illustrated. This is, again, is the location. The sheds illustrated in the aerial are actually not how the shed currently is constructed. The larger of the two sheds illustrated has been rotated ninety degrees to be the center of the three red rectangles that are drawn onto this site, this site plan. This also illustrates the dimensions of the shed, as well as two awnings that have been built off the side of it, and the smaller shed illustrated in the picture has actually been removed. Additionally, I'd like to mention on this next slide that we're about to show that the shed, as it is constructed currently, is three feet from the property line. So the reduction requested would be from the typical ten-foot side setback down to three feet that would be necessary for the shed to continue to exist as it's constructed now. At that distance, it would be in a drainage and utility easement allotted to the county. Additionally, there is a sewer pipeline that runs under where the shed is located currently as well. However, both county offices, relevant county offices have reviewed this, this plan and agree that as long as an easement encroachment agreement is put on file, which will be pending, pending approval of this variance, that they're okay with the shed continuing to exist where it is. Finally, we have a site photo, and again, this is looking at the shed toward the access for the pond property, just on the other side of this privacy fence. And between the privacy fence and the shed being painted green, the intention is to impact the visual of the area as little as possible. And again, the, both of those have been set in place toward that effort. So staff is recommending approval with the condition that if any damage were to occur to the shed, if it exceeded fifty percent of the value of the shed, that the reconstruction or the repairs of the shed would need to see the shed come into code compliance, which would include the ten-foot side setback in the future. And so staff is recommending approval with that condition.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of this issue?
Good evening, everybody. Ben Karens, four five six seven Oxford Drive, husband of the property owner. Couple of things about this. The sheds were previously in existence when we purchased the house a little over seven years ago. There was two sheds. They take up the same area that the current structure is sitting. There was never, when I restructured the shed, there was never any tension of violating any kind of county code. The way the shed was placed is that the larger shed, the entrance to the larger shed was actually right up against the smaller shed, so it was almost impossible to access. And there's a hill coming down from the pond. And so by rotating it ninety degrees, I was able to access the front of the shed much easier and then put awnings out there to store stuff under so it's not in the rain. And because of the greenway directly behind where the structure is right now, there is, it varies from twenty all the way to about thirty-eight feet of space between that and the adjacent piece of property because of the built-in greenway. And the county consistently comes down at least twice a year to do maintenance on the pond and the sewer system, which was mentioned as well. I had no idea when I did any of this that there was a sewer line running through the entire backyard of the entire neighborhood. However, if you look right here, that is actually where the sewer line runs like that, down towards the pond. And so the awning area is the only thing that's over the top of where that sewer is. The actual structure is not sitting on top of the sewer. And on top of that, one of the reasons why I couldn't just move it into the yard to be within ten-foot compliance, which would potentially bring me out of the area where the sewer line is, is because the hill slopes up at such a steep degree going to where the pool is, that I would have to raise, sorry, raise the shed up to a point that it would be so awkward, right? So you would have this shed just gigantic roof lined up there. And I was trying to prevent the roof line from being seen by the cul-de-sac behind the house to where people just didn't see a large structure sitting back there.
Questions? Thanks, sir. Anyone would like to speak opposed to this issue? Or have a motion to accept or deny?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA twenty-three dash zero three dash zero nine, variance to the to reduce the side setback at forty, four, five, six, seven Oxford Drive.
Second.
Second.
All in favor signify, be raising your right hands. Last issue on the agenda is Butler.
Let me share us a request for a revocation of an MOL for Miss Song at Oral Massage at forty-one fifty-eight Washington Road. So back in February, I could first, the Code Enforcement Department received a request to go and have a look into Oral Massage, uh, to check out their massage operators licenses, and also, uh, kind of verify who was providing massages at the site. Uh, they visited the site, and during their compliance check, uh, three others, three, three unlicensed individuals were illegally performing or offering to perform massage. Um, and you have those individuals listed there, and what they were cited for. And then Miss Song was also cited for, um, not actively supervising and monitoring, uh, those, those people. Uh, per section twenty-two dash eighty-two, revocation suspension of operators licenses, um, the license is granted with the ability to be revoked, uh, if there are, uh, certain, uh, things that have been met, you know, for calls essentially. Um, and one of those things, there's a whole list of them. Um, one of those is employing any person who's not a licensed massage practitioner under state law, allowing or permitting such persons to administer massage in the establishment. Uh, Miss Song is, in our opinion, was doing that, and, uh, has, has now, uh, caused there, caused there to be a cause to revoke, uh, the license. At this time, staff recommends that the, uh, planning commission revoke the massage operator's license for Miss Song. If you have any questions on the code sections of having provided to you as well, happy to discuss that, but that concludes our recommendation.
Anyone here would like to speak on behalf of this issue, come forward, please. State your name and address, please.
My name is Jing Gu Song.
And your address?
Uh, four, one, five, eight, Washington Road, Ivins. I am. I don't speak English. Ask me the first. I will try my best.
Um, could you? Our people have found that you have unlicensed employees, and that's against the rules. Is there anything that could be said in her defense ought to help with that?
He said, um, I have someone who tried after COVID-nineteen. Um, it's so hard to find some. Help her for the. Why is there others? Uh, to do. She has. She called a few friends. So hard. Trying others and.
Was she aware, she obviously was aware that they needed to be licensed?
Yeah, um, due to the language she, why, that due to the language she. I do. How she close a couple day? By someone.
Anybody else have any questions?
And to herself. Um, that's house right here.
You know, the problem still remains is that she broke the laws. And it's hard for us to, to overlook that under the circumstances, and I have sympathy for what you're saying. Does anybody else have any questions?
Are the, any of your assistants pursuing a license?
Why you?
What, what's the process? How long does it take to obtain a license?
Four months. Oh, yeah. Oh, she couldn't do. Going to loss a lot.
I understand, but we, certainly we couldn't let them operate and work with her for that period of time without a license. And that's just going against what the laws are that we have.
And she do her.
Ma'am?
Uh, start. As a license.
She should have been the only one operating in that location, because, and as, as I understand it, and as it's been, uh, laid out before us here, of the four people that were cited, the only person that was licensed to operate and to perform massage was, in fact, Miss Song. So, uh, the other three shouldn't even have been in the facility, um, um, per, you know, perpetrating that they could perform that service. So I think, you know, could she do it? Yes, she could, but I think the issue is, is because she was responsible for that license and the operation of that business, and, and solely the only person that was licensed to do so, their position, you know, the planning commission's being asked to decide whether or not she can continue to do it based on the fact that she has, in fact, violated, uh, county code with, you know, allowing unlicensed folks to, to operate in, in her facility.
I'm going. Oh.
Yeah, and so. Sure, and I understand that. So I think one of the, you know, one of the things that's before the planning commission tonight is, is that they're not, they're not even considering whether or not her state license is in question. That's not on the table. It's simply to decide whether or not the county massage operator's license to operate in that location on Washington Road is up for, uh, revocation. And if, you know, if they were to decide that she, her license were to be revoked tonight, she would still have that opportunity to perf, you know, to operate in Georgia. She just couldn't do it in that location in Columbia County. So she might be able to go somewhere else and perform the service, but that's, that's what's on the table tonight is a decision by, you know, these folks to, whether or not she can continue to operate in that location.
The language.
Yeah. So, quick question. You, you said you've got folks who are working on getting their state license? Is that correct?
Yes, she said, yeah.
So like the three that got, um, cited, one from New York and two from Wacross, Georgia, those three are working on getting their license from, from Georgia? Do the, so do they already have, well, I mean, the two that are in Georgia, obviously don't, but the one from New York, does she already have a, a state license from New York? She already been trained in that manner?
One, one have license from New Jersey.
Okay. Paul come up and, uh, give kind of a background on what it takes to get a massage operator's license for the state.
Okay. If you could, we're gonna have Mr. Paul come up and speak for just a minute, and then we'll be right back with you.
All right, as far as the, of licensing for a massage operator, I mean, massage license, it's gonna take them, uh, a minimum of five hundred hours, class instructional hours, to obtain the credit from the schooling of the, the location of what they get their education. And then the process of going through, uh, it's gonna take a minimum, the way we've been seeing from the state, about a month of, you know, once they submit that application to the state in order to obtain that license. We all go from here, because, uh, understanding, like, like Mr. Sterling said, you know, massage operator's license is just for them to do business in Columbia County. Uh, and yes, like it's been stated before, that, that infraction has been made. We can't go back and retract that, so, um, just keep that in mind. Like you said, she can, uh, go to a different location, just for not being our jurisdiction. Uh, can do that, but as far as the, like, Mr., um, Butler said, you know, those individuals may be trying to obtain that license. We don't know how long they have been in class, or i- and if it's possible that they have, can dedicate full-time in, uh, in school to obtain those five hundred hours.
Could she run that business by herself?
She, she would be the only one allowed to do that, the, the massage.
And, and I guess to clarify that, she was the only one that was currently allowed to do that. No one else was permitted or licensed in that location. She should have been the only one doing it already.
Would, would it be a hangup if we talked about putting on a probationary period by herself, the same way she wouldn't lose? The condition, the only one that could do it? That's something we'd be setting the precedent with.
You have the ability to revoke or suspend.
Yeah.
So you could suspend it for a certain amount of time. Could say suspend it for two months or six months, however you wanted to do it. Um, so you do have that ability. Um, again, I think it's already without, you don't have to say that she's the only one that can practice, because she's the only one has M-O-L, so. It's kind of a given. I mean, you could do that just to make it very clear.
Like an explicit.
Yeah, I mean, you could say that, you know, if.
We suspend or revoke or we're putting her out of business.
She's be the only one.
Suspension would be difficult.
I think she would be the only one that can answer that question.
Yeah.
I mean, with a lease and everything else, I would think for sure that. Uh, it's just one of those damn if you do and damn if you don't deals.
Um.
I understand, we need to stand behind the regulations, rules, that's what we got them for.
Right.
Anybody else speak up?
Yeah, I, I gotta, I didn't hear an answer whether any of those others were in school. Studying now, or?
They are, but it's so long before they can get it.
Well, that's, but, but where, where are they? So, I didn't hear the answer about if the other three, three that aren't licensed, are they in school now?
报名去。下个月。Yes. They are going to register. March, oh, four. Sorry. I registered, but, uh, they're registered high.
When, when did she try to register? After they got caught?
We went to, uh, Atlanta to.
Is this, and is this for the classes or for a license examination to get the state license? Okay, to get the state license. Uh, one thing I got, how long have you been operating there at forty-one fifty-eight Washington Road? How long have you been in business? Ten years. And you have an interpreter there to help you with people like me that don't speak your language and you don't speak mine? If I were to come in as a customer, I'm just kind of curious how that works.
也就是问这几句我们。The her, um, in her field, that she could. Um, most people do.
Mr. Butler, Mr. Scarborough, I, I don't want to sit here and do something we should not do, not stand up for the rules that we're from, that we're sworn to do. On the other hand, I would have a little bit of sympathy that we could work it where she by herself was allowed and put on some sort of a probationary period and got caught once the party's over. I, I'm just thinking out loud. Y'all got something to say about it, Mr. Butler or Mr. Scarborough?
Could.
Do something. What just jobs you can do.
That's what I'm talking about. How you feel about it, Mr. Butler?
I mean, so is your question of an opinion of what you can do, or?
I, I mean.
How, how I feel about?
What we can do, but I don't want to stick our neck out too far and, and make a.
So again, you have the ability to suspend or revoke for calls. There's already been a, a determination made, there is call. Um, you know, she was, she's licensed, she had folks practicing who were not licensed. She was not, um, supervising them during that activity. So there is calls for doing either one. You got, you got two options here. Uh, now, we have, we've only, and again, y'all, y'all been there, been here the same amount of time as me, we've only had one other revocation that came through, and I think it was revoked, but it was, um, a little more clear, uh, but also it was one that there are other things with that. Um, it was not necessarily is, this is one that is not a, um, perhaps the sheriff was involved, that sort of thing. So, there's some things here that you might could use to say, here is why we are doing this. Um, you know, the people who are practicing with her are actively trying to get their license, perhaps. Uh, one already has a license from outside of the state, you know, we do not have reciprocity with, uh, massage. Um, so, you know, we require you to come in and get, get the Georgia license, even if you have one from another, from elsewhere. Um, so you could use that perhaps to say, here's why we're doing this. So, that's kind of what I'm he- hearing, what, what she's bringing forward to you, and kind of looking at what, what we have before us, that's kind of your different ways you can go about it.
I. Of course, we can't tell her how to run her business, but if it were me, I'd be trying to find somebody else completely and give up on those that are so far behind in getting it. If, I'm just trying to see, I'll, I'll think of some way that we could let her operate by herself on her license to at least make some kind of living. I hate to just kick her out. I know she's wrong, doubt about that.
And, and would if we prescribed a suspension period, she would be inactive during that time, right? She would be able to.
You, you basically.
Be like being on probation, you would, you're, you're, you're not allowed to operate for this length of time.
You have one here, uh, continue with conditions. At what we're discussing.
So if you could, continue means that, that she keeps her license. The with conditions, that was just left on there. We've never really discussed, can you throw a condition on a continuance? That might be a question we gotta ask our legal side, anyway. Um, but, yeah, I know.
Don't look at me, I'm not the legal side.
I know, I'm just telling you, because, you know, that's, that's your call, Mike. And I, I think that's the challenge is, is, you know, the susp, uh, revocation is cleared, done, and it's over with. A suspension still kind of puts her in that same realm, although there may be an opportunity to, you know, lift it at whatever point, um, you determine, but I think that's, you know, in what they're, what she's asking. But I think that's, you know, and what they're, what she's asking for is, is, you know, she wants to operate tomorrow. Suspension of her, uh, MOL doesn't, doesn't do her any good because she won't be able to operate. So revocation is permanent and pension means she still can't operate.
Either way she is.
Either way, she can't operate if you take either of those two, uh, choices.
There is three choices.
There's three choices, you, you know, I mean, obviously you could choose to not suspend or revocate her license, you could allow her to continue to operate.
Without help, without these.
Yeah, that's, that's on, that's on, that's, the help would have to either be somebody who is already licensed or somebody who can get an MOL. You know, but they can't, they cannot be in there and operate until they have a county MOL.
I guess what I, what I'd like to ask is, can you run your business by yourself until you get help six months from now?
挣点能赔，费用一个样。
It's a she can. Or whether she can help, that's can help her to pay her house. She asked, uh, how about the lady have a license? Other place?
Yeah, so to what Mr. Butler was talking about earlier, regardless of where they have a, they may have massage operator's license in other states. But they have to get one through the state of Georgia. And so even if they have one from New Jersey or New York or wherever else, they, they cannot operate in the state until they have a state license and they can't operate in Columbia County. So you have a Georgia, uh, state license and then a massage operator's license here from Columbia County. So I think that's, you know, probably. If you're of a mind to allow her to continue, uh, uh, solely, she may need administrative help, you know, somebody to run the front, you know, take phone calls, you know. You know, check people in and out, that's, that's different than somebody actually performing the massage service. She alone can, is only one licensed to do it in that location. Now, if you have administrative help, that's totally different. They can, she can have somebody run the front.
Mr. Scarborough, if we.
If we. Can I just make a statement real quick? Um, from the way it sounds, you, you're, you're doing your best not to put this lady out of business. That's, that's to be, uh, that's pretty admirable to do. Uh, you know, I know it says on there with conditions. If you were to put the condition on there, that if code enforcement goes over there tomorrow, a week from now, a year from now. And is anyone in there performing massage that's not licensed, properly licensed to do so. Immediately, the, the, the license therefore is revoked at that time, not going back through this process. Um, I know we have gone through the court system and have had that condition put on other, other individuals in other situations. So that we don't have to go through this again. She does not have to go through this again, but if someone shows up on site, whether that be code enforcement or whomever.
And through her interpreter, she would know that that's, that's.
Right, she needs to know well that, um, she could operate and if she has the proper licensed individuals.
Gets caught, it's over with.
As soon as she gets caught with one person in there that's performing massage, just not being supervised. Or, uh, does not have the proper licensing, then it, it immediately is revoked. Shut the doors, lock them, and that, that's the end of it.
That's, that's the most fair thing to do for everybody concerned. I appreciate you explaining it for us.
So in ten years she's been there, does anybody? So. That's kind of the challenge I'm having, right?
Well, we put her on a. If we put her on, make a motion to put it on a probationary period, and like Mrs. Scarborough said, if there's one incident, just one, that she's breaking that rule, then it's over with. So if maybe tomorrow.
That timeframe typically is one year, a twelve month period. It, it's on a probationary period per se, however you want to put it. Uh, and that way we don't have to, like you said, all. Need about this again, that happens for whatever date that you all set it from that, you know, that anniversary date would be one year from today's date or whatever that is.
Question. Why are we putting an end date on it? If you're operating, if you're operating.
I, I agree.
If you're operating illegally.
I agree.
Uh, for, after you've been given a chance.
Right, I just, I'm just going by what the judicial system.
Usually the court puts a date on them, they don't do it indefinitely. All right.
Preferably, I would, I'd rather they not be, but that's, I don't have a doubt.
If, if anybody's of a mind to make a motion concerning what we all just discussed, the floor is open.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. To continue the massage operator's license with conditions for June song, forty one fifty eight Washington Road, suite ten, tax map zero seven nine parcel zero nine eight three. East and currently zone C two. For twelve months probationary period, it will be revoked if anyone is practicing. Not a license on the premises.
Okay.
Sterling, is that failed out enough? Have a motion in a second. For discussion. All in favor of seating if I be raising your right hands. Ma'am, do you understand what we just did?
She, she can operate and only she can operate in that location until, and anybody else that were to operate has to be licensed through the state of Georgia and through the Columbia County. Until such time as e- both of those can be had, nobody else can operate but her. Now she can have administrative help, you know, somebody answering the phones, taking payment, you know, interacting with the customers, but they cannot perform the massage operate, uh, massage services.
Georgia license.
Georgia license.
Have a Georgia license.
Columbia County massage operator, yeah.
And you want to say something?
Four months.
She can continue to operate as is, but, you know, regardless of tomorrow through the twelve months or thirteen months, you know, two years, five years from now. Anybody who's performing massage services will have to be licensed correctly. So until they can be properly licensed, he is the only one that is licensed to be in that location performing service.
And to make sure she understands that inspectors will be checking on it.
Yeah, yeah, the tw-. Yeah, we will send a letter with whatever the decision is here tonight.
Y'all did, didn't you?
Motion in second, vote hasn't been taken yet.
Oh, okay. Okay, all in favor of seating if I be raising your right hands?
Oh, I'm sorry, was it?
All opposed.
Was it three, was it three, one? Okay. I don't think the, a vote was made. That's right. So it, it was passed three, one, so.
No.
She is able to continue to operate. We will get you that letter probably in the next couple of days, probably either, either tomorrow or, or no later than Monday, I would imagine. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, that concludes tonight's business. Anything else needs to be discussed?
So I do have one housekeeping issue. So at the beginning of the meeting, we didn't do a roll call in quorum. Can we do that real quick?
Do what now?
The roll call in quorum, so y'all declare you have. Four people here, next on the record of it.
About that, but we have four commissioners here and one is after.
All right.
Anything else? This meeting stands adjourned then.
Joy Masters, we.
Make a motion for it to be adjourned. Somebody make a motion second.
All in favor?
All right, now, meeting adjourned. You know what? Well, I just, we only have one heartless joke.